You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 28th meeting for the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Good evening. I'd like to call the July 28th County Council meeting to order. Please silence your phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Pressle.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Auditor, the roll, please.
Present.
Mr. Yagelski.
Present.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Mr. Novak.
Present.
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 Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain motions of approval for the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Keel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I'm looking for approval of the June 23rd, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion? That, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This time, I'll open for public comment. Anybody from the public, welcome to, except for Steve.
Good evening. Steve Hollifield, 6782 East Hundred South. I spoke with all of you the last few days. I just want to make all still aware. The issue, you've seen all the email trails coming out of the courtrooms and everything else over there. This has been an ongoing issue. I think this is something that's going to have to be addressed next year, sooner or later. Contrary, I probably believe this is probably not the hottest summer that I can remember. There have been far hotter summers, but there's an issue over there and it's just getting worse, and I just want to make sure we address that and take care of it next year.
I appreciate that. One quick question for you, sir. So, in previous years, when we had a HVAC technician, and we're going to go by the rumor mill, right?
Yeah.
By experience, what folks said is that there was individuals, the HVAC technician would make adjustments to this system in order to try to, I'm going to call balance it, in order to make it more comfortable in the courthouse. That's far from ideal, but yet, at the same time, it might be something that's prudent. I'd ask that you have someone at least take a look and see what are we doing with the balancing of the chilled water across each of the different air handlers to see what we can do to try to level it out?
I think they are, but do not forget, when our workshops, we had a lot of the problems we have right now are because of our so-called quote-unquote "expert." So, I'm not naming names.
Not inviting going there.
Here's the other thing, for us to take any action, we need a, we need...
They're working on that.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Kelly Wozniak, 2399 Orchard Drive. I have been an employee of LaPorte County for 12 years, and I am here this evening from guidance from our HR director to address the concerns I have about my role as the first deputy in the Treasurer's Office. To ensure everyone is informed, I will provide a brief overview. In late January, the HR department posted the position for the first deputy twice. The first stated it was a COMOP 5, and the second, mere hours later, as a correction, stated it was in fact a COMOP 6 position. In late February, I was hired as the first deputy in the Treasurer's Office. As part of that process, I had to sign a job description that clearly indicated the position was classified as a COMOP 6. I officially began on March 27th in the Treasurer's Office, but it wasn't until the council meeting on the 24th that I was made aware there was a concern regarding the salary for that role. According to the salary ordinance, I could only be paid at a COMOP 5 level. Mr. President, you requested that the reclassification committee meet to get this matter resolved. There was a meeting, however, what went before that committee was that a second deputy position be reclassified to a first deputy position. One of my questions is, how did this become a reclassification issue when at the January meeting, it was unanimous vote, seven to zero, that Dan was given approval to hire a first deputy position? I was forwarded an email on March, May 16th, that a decision was made and the classification did not warrant the change nor the increase. If my memory serves me, the second meeting took place without knowledge of my department head, and hence, he was not able to be present. Once again, I inquired with Dan about why this wasn't merely just a straightforward salary ordinance matter. I understand that it could be quite perplexing, as the salary ordinance dated December 30th of 2024 classifies the first deputy position as a COMOP 6, while the one dated February 24th of 2025 categorizes it as a COMOP 5. The new salary ordinance was introduced nearly a month after the job was posted, twice, I might add, and four days before I signed my job description and submitted it to Monique. I submitted a formal complaint based on the legal advice on July 16th with both Dan and Monique. I was told through an email from Monique that I would need to address this complaint with you, the council. You should have received my complaint via email on July 24th. My apologies if everyone did not receive it. Mr. Pressle and Mr. Kessler, your emails are not on the council webpage. While I strive to be understanding, I would appreciate an explanation of how a situation like this can occur. Shouldn't the Auditor's Office and the Human Resources Department maintain a more effective line of communication regarding employee wages and their livelihoods? If someone would have reached out to me during that time, I may have chosen to remain at my other position within the county. As I stated in my formal complaint, I am requesting that my compensation be adjusted to the COMOP level I was hired immediately, and that I receive retroactive pay for both regular hours and overtime hours worked. I initially sought to achieve a modest financial gain and to acquire a new skill set, but now I find myself nearly four and a half months later, caught in the midst of someone else's error, with no one willing to accept responsibility, apologize, or rectify this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, real quickly, being the fact that this is an employee matter and not something, being that it is financially impactful in terms of the budget, is this something that we can even discuss during this sort of meeting?
Bless him.
Absolutely not. It's an employment issue.
Okay.
Her salary is an employment issue?
Pardon?
Her salary is an employment issue?
This needs to be done in an executive session.
I'm pretty sure executive sessions aren't allowed to have discussions about salaries.
It's a personnel classification issue.
Okay. That directly ties to her salary.
Okay.
If you want to get sued, Justin, go ahead and talk about it.
All right.
Could go either way.
Folks, thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public? All right. With that, public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Any department heads like to approach?
Long time no see. Lynn Swanson, LaPorte County Coroner. I'm here to give you some numbers about what our office has been doing for the past seven months. To date, we have responded to 244 investigative calls. I'm also going to give you some 2024 numbers to give you a little idea of what's going on and why I'm here later. Last year, at this same time, we had responded to 183 calls. The breakdown on the calls are accidents for 2025 are 15, homicides, seven, natural causes, 180, overdoses, 17, suicides, 17, and undetermined, two. We have six calls pending that are still awaiting toxicology and autopsy reports. In 2024, accidents were seven, homicides, two, natural, 146, overdoses, 13, suicides, 11, and four, undetermined. So obviously, the numbers are going up. We're seeing a lot more numbers in suicides. Overdoses are up slightly, and homicides are up as well. In 2025, to date, we have done 40 autopsies and 21 prison autopsies. Keep in mind that the 21 prison autopsies do not affect the county budget, as that they are billed to the county that the offender originally came from. So it's a money-in, money-out situation through Department of Corrections.
Would you remind repeating those two numbers again real quick?
Forty, forty regular autopsies and 21 prison.
Thank you.
In 2024, at this same time, we had done 29 autopsies and nine prison autopsies. So the numbers are definitely increased from last year. Last year, the total for the year for autopsies was 61. We're over half of that already, and 18 prison autopsies for the year. Also, we just, I just swore, had sworn in Bruce Garwood, a new deputy coroner, bringing my total to six. That's including my chief deputy, and I'm actually looking to hire two more, as I have had one deputy already tell me that he is going to be leaving in April. So that's going to take us back down. So our caseload is definitely increasing, like I said, and I'll see you later.
Could you email that to us, too?
I'm sorry?
Could you email that to us, that report?
Absolutely.
Without me taking a picture, you're...
Of my notes. Sure.
I'll put it in my file.
Okay. One more thing. We had kind of an unusual situation about two and a half weeks ago, where we were called out on a death call, and when we got there, it was immediately apparent that we were not going to be able to handle this alone. We ended up having to call Michigan City Fire out. They sent Station 3 and Station 4 for assistance. This woman was over 600 pounds. There was no way to get her out of the house. The fire department had to cut a six-by-eight-foot hole in the side of her home, and that's how we had to remove her. They were there for well over two hours, and it was hot. In appreciation for their help, I bought them lunch, Subway sandwiches, and drinks, and chips, and had them sent to the fire departments. The total was like $128 or something like that. Is this something that I can request to be paid out of my non-reverting fund as opposed to out of my pocket?
Mr. Auditor, based off the definition of a non-reverting fund?
There's no specific line item in it right now, so we would have to have something created. And typically, anytime once people want to spend money, and I've mentioned this in an email to you, typically when they go to spend money on food, they usually ask in advance, however, this is an unusual circumstance, you make the decision if you want to have it reimbursed.
Given the circumstance, I recommend a motion be made by the council.
Don't have a donation fund?
Do I have a donation? No, I do not. No.
I'll entertain. Anybody got a motion?
How much is, how much, you can't give, you can't tell it's about, but you got to know how much it is?
I do. I have the receipts. I just did not...
I think you sent it to us. They mailed it to us.
Yes. I have not sent them, but...
We'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve out of non-reverting funds by Mr. Mullenhour.
Second.
Second by Mr. Novak.
Okay. So in the future, because you asked whether or not I had a donation fund?
Just, right.
Okay. So my question is, since there's not a line item set up for this kind of situation, can I ask the auditor to set up a separate fund and have money appropriated?
And this...
I think you still got to come back and ask.
Right. But I mean...
I don't think you need to put a separate line in that.
Doesn't happen that often, and...
I'm sorry?
Say, it doesn't happen that often. I think...
You got to come back and ask.
You probably did the right thing this time. I think you did, and you're here to get it approved.
So, in either case, before we get ahead of ourselves, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So now, regarding a donation fund, I'm not...
She just asked for a line item in her non-revert...
Oh, in her non-revert.
Right.
Got it.
I mean, I still, I understand I would still have to come and request it.
We can take care of that offline.
All right. That's fair.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
This is scary.
Good evening.
So, I'm here to ask for permission, yes, sir.
Who are you?
Pardon?
Who are you?
Ask, Grant. I am Steve Iraik. I am the Chief Probation Officer, Adult Probation, in LaPorte County, and I'm here to request permission to spend no more than $3,000 for a surface tablet for Judge Link, magistrate Link.
And software.
And software. Should be no more than $3,000. It would come out of probation user fees.
Motion approved, Mr. President.
Second.
So it's already appropriated?
This has not been appropriated.
Yeah, it's user fees.
So they don't need appropriation?
Usually, it's a permission to spend.
Permission to spend.
Which is, it is, it is technically an appropriation, however, it does not require an additional appropriation where we need to...
Correct. Motion stands.
I'm sorry, the second was?
Novak. So, Yagelski, Novak. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Darlene, I'm taking your notes from that as saying that you approved?
Yes.
All right.
What it says?
It's the proposal that it was mentioned to you in an email.
Just giving her a hard time.
Oh, okay.
Here, why don't you give me the rest of this, pass them down?
You're fine.
Hello, Darlene Hale, LaPorte County IT. I'm coming for a request for permission to spend from the Assessors Reassessment Fund in Professional Services for...
I don't see an assessor. You pointed to an assessor.
No, I just, he was back there. He is now gone. But to, we're going to do a study, I mean, this is the whole proposal, but we're asking just for the $16,000 for permission to spend for the GIS, and it's a, the strategic plan for GIS.
Okay. So we, a number of us spoke on Friday. Mr. Yagelski was joined, I had joined.
And he's from...
And I'm assuming this is Jeff from...
Correct.
All right. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself real quick.
Hi, my name's Jeff Weaver. I'm with, I'm the Director of Digital Solutions with Eben Marsh out of South Bend.
All right. So it's safe to say that as we look at the needs of our server supporting GIS and the software which we use and the applications that we're using it, we're on borrowed time when it comes to what we've got for our abilities to maintain our geographic information system, right? Would you add any more detail to that?
So the servers technically haven't been updated for 10 years. We started out, you know, actually, maybe even longer than that. With three servers, we now have combined them down...
15 years ago.
15 years. We have now combined them down to one server, because the others died, and it is way past upgrading. So we're looking at a couple of different plans. We haven't quite came up with the solution yet that we want to go with, whether it's going to be cloud-hosted or onsite, you know, hosted, but it's a matter of, we're going to, well, he's going to meet with all the departments, see what portion or what percentage of GIS that they use. We're going to try to, you know, get some of the funds from non-general fund, funds, you know, whether it be user fees, or reassessment, or the other fees. So all the departments would contribute to maintaining the GIS department, and we would also be able to combine all the data. Currently, you know, we have Highway out there, they're geolocating ditches and putting their information in one system, and we have Mike's Department in Real Estate that does the splits and transfers with the parcels. 911 does center, center road lines, and they have, their parcels have to be maintained, you know, plus the assessors. Everybody uses it.
So this, if I recall, it was a number of $16,000?
It was. And it's so that they can meet with the departments to figure out what they use, what they could use with the newer versions of software and having everything combined. I do know that we have talked that LaPorte City is currently going through the same plan, and with us being on the same version as them, we could then, if they're willing, to share their data with us, would be able to see, you know, utilities and sewers and stuff within the city limits, too, that they have, the data that they have. And in turn, they would be able to see our data.
All right. So for all practical purposes, this is an assessment fee to understand what our solution is going to be and what that cost is going to be going forward.
Correct.
And they're willing to do a pie chart, so we can figure out department percentages.
Yes.
Okay. As to who's, adding to the kitty, basically. Okay.
I believe they are planning on meeting, hopefully, within this month with the, all the departments, so that we will be able to come back in August.
And hopefully, he's doing it.
He's going to do it.
So, so we're looking at a permission to spend out of a budgeted account from 2015 reassessment?
Correct. Professional services.
Is there any, is there any need for us to make any kind of motion? Mr. Bijji? We're crossing budget lines, right? I don't think so.
Give me your blessing.
This is kind of ironic that we're giving permission to spend out of a budget for a person that's not here.
Yeah, but he was here, and he did state that he would pay it.
We don't want to open the doors to where other departments are coming for, I'm just kidding.
I was going to ask for probation, too, so...
Second.
So are we going to call this a motion of support?
Motion of support.
All right. So motion of support from Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor?
Hold on, hold on. We skipped over discussion. I'm going to vote nay when we get to this, because we got a 19-page handout here and an explanation right in the meeting under public comment. This doesn't feel very...
Well, that's the whole grand scheme of things. We're just talking about the very first part, the strategic plan, to come up with what we need to do.
Which is going to cost us...
Probably a lot.
Like, over $100,000?
Yeah.
So we're just making this decision to spend over $100,000, and we're supposed to do it like this?
No, 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 no.
This is for $16,000 out of a budget account.
To come up with a strategic plan.
Yes, only $16,000, and it's not an additional appropriation.
This is money that has already been accounted for.
And also, this is going to be upon Commissioner approval. I mean, they have to sign the contract. They have to approve the contract at their next meeting.
Justin, this is really to help us get to the initial part of what we got to do, us, the council, the group, so it's strictly for that.
And it's a three-to-five-year plan. You would like that.
I'm still not thrilled about finding, we have an agenda.
I know.
Like, there's a process for getting it on the agenda. People can ask, and then we get blindsided with large expenditures at the meeting that nobody has a chance to look at, or at least I didn't get a chance to look at, so...
Well, I couldn't invite everybody to the meeting.
I said through the presentation also, with the 911 that I represent, and it, I think it's...
And Adam was on the phone for the one, and so was Mark. I did invite...
Was invited.
And so, for future reference, not strictly directed at you, but if someone has something and they want us to look at it before the meeting, I love to look at stuff, so...
I know. That's why I printed out the whole thing for you.
My colleagues seem to have trust in it, so I'm sure it'll pass, but I'll be known on that principle.
And I agree with Justin on that, where if you were on the budget, we could get it in our, in our packet, and then we could have time to look at it.
It's kind of been a fast-moving pace for this project, to try to get...
Especially given the condition of the servers, something needs to happen faster.
Because that one server is, like, on its last leg.
All right. Mr. Yagelski.
Yep. A lot of it, both to my colleagues on my left, last year, we tried to get this thing going. This year, we got to this point. This day came about helping with our needs. We didn't know what we needed to get this to the next level.
Correct.
We sat at the meeting, we wanted, we wanted to get the departments, what percentage they think, so it's this pie chart, so everybody's obligated to take care of this. I guess I'll take some of the blame for it, but what we, we really wanted to get this thing moving forward, and so it wasn't meant to bypass anything, because you guys were involved with it last year trying to get it to this next level. I think GIS is going to be really good for the benefit, whether, whether you guys go on the rest of it, doesn't, is not, that's up to you. If you turn, if you turn the rest of it down, we're still going to do it, get our $16,000 worth.
And...
So you got all the information to do whatever, to whatever study you want to see.
One other reason this went so fast is we just got done with the grant process with them, and this is how we determined that the servers were in such bad shape. They did about 48,000 parcels they had to fix and change from a grant that we got from the state. Once we got that data and started looking at the servers and the backside of stuff, we realized that we're in bad shape, so that's why this is going quicker than normal, so...
Things aren't communicating.
So my stuff isn't talking to their stuff, and that's what we've kind of found out now. Now we're coming to you guys to hopefully get some of this stuff fixed, because a lot of our data was updated through a grant. We got a grant for about $30,000, but it's roughly about $90,000 worth of work they've done so far for us, so...
Introduce yourself.
Matt Decker, Assistant Director, 911, sorry.
I was going to get there. Let him finish.
Is there a rule against shorts at a meeting?
There is.
I'm not supposed to, not supposed to be here. I'm supposed to be on my daughter's birthday, but we came to make sure this was, so that's one reason it's going so quick, though.
Okay. Thank you for the context.
Any further discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
She's a rock handle.
Good evening. Dan Barney, LaPorte County Treasurer.
Hey, Dan.
I just want to let you know that the employee that was up here tonight was worked for the county for 12 years. She's worked in my office for a few months, and she's done an excellent job. She's contributed a lot to that office and making improvements on it, and I'm sure she's contributed a lot to everywhere she's worked in the county. HR asked her to come here. She did. So when can we expect the executive session to be notified of it? When's it going to be?
I'm going to take, take that item with, I would assume, at least the council and the commissioners, and figure out where that's going to go. So as soon as I have something scheduled, you'll be notified, but I would anticipate here within the week, at least, getting that plan lined out. Okay. It's best I can do right now, because there's two parties involved.
Thank you.
The commissioner's party, then?
I don't think so.
We're going to have to work it out and see.
I don't think so. It doesn't matter.
Well, litigation is the only thing...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's true.
Okay. Any further department heads? With that, department head reports are closed. Liaison reports. Mr. Mullenhour.
Okay. You just got a couple of things. July 8th, I attended the Sheriff's Office of Merit Commission meeting, and on July 16th, I attended the Solid Waste District Board meeting. July 23rd, I attended the annual Ag Tour, as some of you did, and barbecue at the Minnick Dairy Farm on 425 West. Earlier today, I spoke with the MA Director, Rob Sabey, and he gave me a little update Earlier today, I spoke with EMA Director Rob Sabey and he gave me a little update on the truck that he's got now and he's very happy with it, very pleased. He pulled the trailer to a couple of events. I think he said the red wine and brew and not sure if it was the fairgrounds also. And I think to the Lake Fest this weekend. And the truck handles the trailer unbelievably. He said he doesn't even know the trailer's back there, so. So he's very pleased with that and still waiting for a cap and that to get on it and the lights and that. But that's going well for him. And last thing I got is getting tired talking about retired officers passing away on the sheriff's officers. But Fred Hess, 20-year veteran, he passed away recently and our prayers go out to his family. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keel.
I won't belabor you with liaison reports. Almost all of my activities in the last month have been centered around the budget and you've already heard all of that throughout our budget workshops. So that pretty much concludes my report.
All right. Mr. Novak.
I just want to commend everybody that was responsible for the LaPorte County Fair. I'm sure Mr. Kessler will add to that. So I attended FMAC, 911, communicated with them, Purdue Extension. We had an insurance meeting, personnel meeting, and finance and agenda meeting is some of the things we worked on. And I just want to remind everybody that this weekend is the big boat race in Michigan City, so I'm heavily involved with that also, so. That's it.
Mr. Pressle.
Yes, sir. Just want to hit on Plan Commission. We started a comprehensive plan for the area, so I'd like to get everybody involved if we can. We'll have... I know they're out at the fairgrounds. Talk to people out there, but we're going to have some mobile units set up, I think, in the complex here, the courthouse, possibly the library. They're going to move them around. Encourage people to go out, give them your info on what you want to see happening in the county. We greatly appreciate it.
Just out of curiosity, that comprehensive plan is updated every 10 years?
I believe it's every 10. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Well, piggybacking off Councilman Novak, fair did go off pretty much without a hitch this year. We had not-record attendance this year, but we still had a great turnout. Weather was pretty good for it, a little warm. Looking forward to next year's July 11th through the 18th. You know, it's kind of funny. We worked for three months to get that place ready and then by Sunday afternoon, you can't even tell we had a fair there the day before. So hats off to all the volunteers, whether you're in Pioneer Land, whether you're a food vendor, whether you're a 4Her, just everybody did a great job. The only other liaison report I have at this moment would be with the animal shelter and we're working on some things out there. And hopefully we keep the train going in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you. As for myself, again, we all belated as far as budget sessions. I had the RDC meeting last week and then had the soil and water, what they call legislative breakfast, a few weeks ago. With that, that concludes liaison reports. Mr. Auditor, do we have any correspondence? All right. With that, we'll move to ordinances and resolutions, starting with an ordinance declaring certain MS4 funds dormant and transferring remaining amounts to the Stormwater Operations Fund. Everybody should have a copy in their packet. If we want to...
Motion to approve.
Do we want to read by title only?
Oh, we can do that. It's an ordinance, right? I'm sorry. Motion to approve by title only.
Second.
So motion read by title only by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Pressle. Any discussion?
Motion to get the auditor a microphone that lapel.
All in favor of reading by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
This is the ordinance 2025-7, ordinance declaring certain MS4 funds dormant and transferring remaining amounts to the Stormwater Operations Fund.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion?
This might be coming, but for the sake of the audience, can we have like a brief description of what this is meant to accomplish or what the impetus behind this is?
With that?
In 25 words or less.
Yeah. Give him 30. All right.
Does my introduction come?
Your introduction's first, please.
It does. Paul Vicari, LaPorte County Stormwater Director, Carl Sander.
Carl Sander, Sander Dalton Municipal Advisor.
Okay. So in essence, we have to fund our program. So what this accomplishes is allows us, within an 18- to 24-month period, think to become self-sufficient.
So when these are... It talks about dormant funds. What has led to these being dormant?
There are two non-reverting accounts. There are the fees of which I've collected since my time as director before that coordinator. These are review fees. We're doing all those in-house, 95%.
Okay.
The second one is an entity participation fund for services that were rendered. We've got verification of that. Those have been sitting there. That's $80,000. So both of those funds have been combined and brought in with our general fund, which is salaries plus the 20-something that's in there for things like office supplies. And Carl devised, in consultation with the auditor's office, a brand-new stormwater operating fund that will move our department forward.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Dalton?
No.
Carl Sander. Thank you.
So again, this is just consolidating those funds, as Mr. Vicari has mentioned, to fund the Stormwater Operations Fund and with fees that he'll be collecting in the future should, hopefully, together with the Stormwater Department and the general fund, fund their operations for stormwater for the foreseeable future.
All right. Okay. Want to answer your question?
Yeah. We do a lot of things up here and sometimes the audience then doesn't know what we're doing, so I appreciate you guys explaining it very briefly for us.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? With that, all in favor of approving ordinance number 2025-7, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to a resolution creating certain Stormwater Operations Fund.
Motion to read by title only.
Motion to read by title only by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Novak. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Auditor.
This is Resolution 2025-7, resolution creating certain Stormwater Operations Fund.
It's a pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler and Mr. Pressle. Any discussion? All in favor of approving resolution creating certain Stormwater Operations Fund, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, consideration for abatement request for 2M Shop Group in KIP.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt Reardon, Office of Economic Development. There was a small manufacturing company approached the Office of Economic Development looking for some assistance. And when we get those requests, we start with the existing conditions of the property that they're looking to locate to. Parcel they're looking to acquire is located on Third Line Road and HUP in Kingsbury Industrial Park. It's a 13-acre site. It's adjacent to Helena Chemical. And the proposed project would include construction of a 54,000-square-foot shop with a 21,000-square-foot office. The existing conditions are there's 13-plus acres and there's nothing on it and there's no jobs and the current assessed value is, oh, 2,000 or, excuse me, 1,545 per acre. So what does that mean? Existing conditions over 10 years, this property would generate a total of $3,647 in property tax. What happens if they go there? They'll build a 45,000-square-foot shop. They'll... A 45,000-square-foot manufacturing shop and assembly area. They're going to create, bring seven, create seven. The average wage is $70,000. And the new assessed valuation paid into the county over the 10-year period will be So 33,647 or 9,600... That's what we're looking at. The zoning is appropriate for this use and they're requesting some assistance. The recommendation from the Office of Economic Development is a five-year real estate abatement. They have representation and attorney. They've been given this information. Along with that will be a $24,000 plus or minus fee to the Office of Economic Development to be used for projects in economic development. I'd ask that the council consider approving the resolution identifying an area and declaring and creating what's called an economic revitalization area for the project. Oh, yeah, that's right. They're also going to be bringing $1 million of personal property and adding a million. So there'll be additional tax there. I really haven't sorted that out with the creation of the general assemblies. We're not even through July yet, so I'm, you know, I'm 27 years into this. I'm going, what did you do? But they'll probably get an automatic incentive and deduction for that because of $2 million.
Mr. President, motion to read Resolution Number 25-dash...
Dash?
Would it be eight?
7A.
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 Read by title only, please.
Motion read by title only by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Novak. All in favor of reading by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Auditor.
Resolution 2025-7A, a resolution of LaPorte County Council identifying and declaring portions of the LaPorte County, Indiana, be designated as an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1-1 et cetera.
Thank you. It's a pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yagowski. Yes, Mr. Kessler.
Just want to make sure that when we get the signature sheet, the date is correct on the back of it.
All right.
That's the only thing I said on the comment.
Okay.
We're making it retroactive.
It's March.
March.
It's retroactive, yeah.
Questions? So is this the first of several hearings or is this one and done?
Well, as the council's probably aware, this process requires a public hearing. I would request that the council set that at their September 25th meeting, a public hearing about it and it'll be...
September, not August?
I'm sorry. August meeting. I'm just moving it along down the road here. August meeting, where there'd be a public hearing for the approval of the ERA and the statement of benefits.
Okay. So this is just creating the economic revitalization zone, not the abatement?
Correct. Yeah. Both have to come. Finalization of the ERA after the public hearing, finalization of the ERA and then acceptance of the statement of benefits and the agreement to remit the fee.
This comment isn't directed at you specifically or anyone specifically for that matter, but had I not asked you this morning for a copy of this, I would not have read this whatsoever. So we just got it now. So I'd like to see us do something more to make sure these things are in front of us.
Well, I tell you what. I'll take it upon myself and our office to make sure that all the council get any requests directly sent to all the members. Typically, what I do is I send it to leadership and that's kind of been our practice.
May I add? We received it last week while we were out of town and it didn't get forward. You saw me sending out lots of emails Friday and even today. It just didn't get sent. So it's just one of those.
But we'll take it upon ourselves to send it out to everybody that way. If anybody has any questions, you guys can find me. You know where to find me and ask them directly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for being very responsive when I asked this morning for it. You were just like that. It was in my text.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor of approving Resolution 2025-7A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. See you next month.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to new business. We have four items here, all in for replacement positions, starting with LaPorte County Clerk requesting permission to hire Deputy Clerk in Superior 1 and Deputy Clerk in Superior 3. We have LaPorte County Prosecutor Sean Fagan requesting permission to hire investigator due to lateral transfer of current investigator. We have LaPorte County Building Maintenance requesting permission to hire two full-time housekeepers. And we have LaPorte County Auditor requesting permission to hire full-time real estate deputy clerk and permission to utilize part-time budget to train for the position. Do I have any thoughts or recommendations from the council? Now, each of these positions have been given permission to start the process, to seek out of candidates, but was then still required. These are all replacements. Now, the one thing to note, and you'll see it in the note where it talks about permission utilized part-time budget to train for position. This is in the last item for the LaPorte County Auditor. This real estate deputy clerk is... Has a forecasted date of departure within the year, within this calendar year, and they're going to utilize their existing budget to hire somebody in parallel of that departure so that they can train that real estate clerk by the person that's holding the position now. Is that a fair way to say that, Mr. Auditor?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is a question. We're only looking for a week.
Second?
I've got a question.
For all of them?
I didn't say motion.
So did I hear motion? Motion for all of them, second by Mr. Keel. Discussion, Mr. Yagowski.
Okay. This is not... It's been a practice not to pay for people to train. There should be people cross-trained. They should be able to teach people that. So I'm opposed to any that's coming out of the budget to train. Departments should be cross-training people or the person should be trained that way. It's happened with other departments. This ain't the first department and we've declined and denied this in the past.
Any further discussion? So with that, call for the vote. All in favor of hiring the replacements for the four separate departments as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
6-1. Thank you. On to appropriations, transfers, and requests. LaPorte Circuit Court requesting additional appropriation for psychological services of any amount of $11,000. Do we have anybody representing?
To approve on a riverboat.
Okay. Motion approved by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressle. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
6-1. LaPorte County Building Maintenance requesting additional appropriation to repair two sets of showers in cell block S2 and S3 in LaPorte County Jail above the quote-unquote "back 40" three-inch gas line.
Hi.
Hi there.
Angie Davis, interim director of facilities.
You come up with a couple of friends, too, I see.
I did. I was prepared for you guys, so.
So we've talked about this in the past. There's a three-inch gas line that had a custom-made, call it flow diverter, for any water coming down from...
I like that.
You like that? For any water coming out of the... For any water coming out of the, coming out of the upper floors is dripping out of this gas line and now just diverts onto the floor. There is some corrosion in the steel pipe, but doesn't be too detrimental at this time, but it's something we gotta deter right now. What's the pleasure of the council?
Got some questions.
Entertained a moment. Go for it.
Some questions. Public Works Project, it's on a building. It's under $50,000, so, you know, the threshold for, has not been met for it to go through the more competitive procurement process. But I'm wondering, did you seek multiple estimates or just the one that we received from Mark Whistler?
This is the one.
Was it Mark Whistler, Lepore County Project Management?
Project Management.
Okay. It's just a very round number, that's why I ask.
They actually had done a set of showers to begin with, and we have discussed all of the showers in the jail that would have to go out for bid. These two cell blocks are in need of getting done. The gas line has been corroded for, I can't tell you how long.
The need sounds important, yes.
We had already had a set done, and it was 20,000, I believe, for the first set. So this is two sets of showers. So we've already had one done.
Okay, so this is twice what was done before, and it's a little bit cheaper per item.
It's the same. It's the same per cell block.
Right.
And how many years has this been leaking?
Probably longer than I've been alive.
I heard.
I can't.
Don't flatter yourself. I heard 20 years, but I-
Come on, come on. Give me a little credit here. I'm trying.
I'm not. I think you're close to that.
Right. Just a little over.
I'll give you that. But, yeah, but I heard it's been leaking for-
It's been a while, yeah.
A long time.
Mm-hmm.
And has never been able to be fixed. I mean, there's been attempts on it, but not-
That I'm aware of, I'm not shocked. That would be before me. When I was, came in, there was a pan and maybe a hose.
Okay. Any discussion?
There's no motion yet on the floor.
Nope. All right, then, any other questions? Now entertain for the motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Mullenhour. Out of which account? I have Riverboat, I have Wind Tax.
I got Lit Economic Development, too.
Oh, excuse me. Hey, wait a minute. Yes. I was up one, so yes. Riverboat, Wind Tax, Lit Public Safety, Lit Economic Development.
Most money. We can use it.
All right.
Economic Development.
So a motion by Mr. Mullenhour to fund from Lit Economic Development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pressle. Any further discussion? One thing that I'd mention is you do have a number of showers that you're looking at in the future, right?
Correct.
I would do what you can to avoid this, in this particular case, it makes sense. Do what you can to avoid unnecessary splitting of the project-
Correct.
-where we have to go through and look at appropriate.
If I'm not mistaken, they're going, they're trying to get a scope of work so they can go out for bid on it.
Yes, there will be a surplus.
That's what I was doing as well, just making sure.
If it wasn't for this gas line, I think it would-
Correct.
This gas line creates a whole new situation. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of approving out of Lit Economic Development signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Six one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, request from Lepore County Auditor requesting permission to spend or appropriate from Auditor's ineligible deduction fund, the amount of $6,800.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Kessler. Quick discussion. It's in our package. Mr. Auditor, what is this for?
Our biz hub died completely. Motherboard, everything. And so we are using a temporary one now, but it needs replacement. We went out to match up as close as we can to what we have. We did receive the proposal, which you should have had a copy, along with a lot of other stuff, and that's what we're looking to do.
All right. So, Mr. Yagelski, as a representative from the IT, this is, fits the need?
It was, it absolutely does, yeah.
Okay.
The size is proper for their office and everything.
And everybody uses it.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. With that, all in favor of approving out of Auditor's ineligible deduction fund signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Now, requesting a transfer, also from the Lepore County Auditor, requesting a transfer from juror fees to jury pay fund in the amount of $70,000.
Move, Mr. President.
So I'm gonna go with a motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Novak.
Gladly yield to Mr. Yagelski.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Any discussion? All in favor of approvals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Coroner requesting additional appropriation for autopsies in the amount of $42,000 and $16,000 for professional services from either Riverboat and Wind Tax for a total of $58,000.
Good evening again. The $42,000 would take me until the end of the year, based on what we pay per month to the pathologist, so that would take me to the end of the year. I currently have enough in my budget to pay him through September, and then I'm empty. We do this every year. I tell you how much I need, you give me this much and say, come back. So I'm back for that.
And looking at your numbers, right? You'd said last year you had a total of 61 autopsies. So far, you've completed 61 autopsies, 40 of which are on our account.
Yes.
Okay.
And he's, I mean, he's paid the same amount no matter what. So, I mean, it's not like he's gonna raise it because we've done more autopsies, you know, this, so far this year. The number's gonna stay the same.
Okay.
May I?
Any questions?
Mr. Novak.
During budget hearings, we talked about this agreement with this pathologist. And you sent us, I believe, an invoice.
Well, it's, it was re, the way he headed it was re the invoice. I don't know why he did that, but that's the agreement.
Regarding him.
Regarding, yeah.
But is there a contract with this individual?
There is not, to my knowledge, and I've never seen one, a legal contract. I don't even know who, I mean, does the county draw that up?
Commissioners.
The commissioners? Okay. Well, I took, I took the same thing that I sent to you, to the commissioners, and then they moved it along without saying anything about having a legal contract.
It's 16 a month?
16 a month.
Mr. Beege, is usually the vendor's the one that would be the one to prepare the first draft of the contract, right? I mean, usually it's in their best interest.
That's true, but many times we don't have contracts for professional services because you don't know what the scope of work is. Now, here we know what the scope of work is. And it's the same amount every month. They get paid regardless of what they do.
Right.
My question is, is $192,000 and there's no contract, no commissioner approval? I don't disagree. This would be a fairly simple contract to draft in an execute.
Right. And this is basically a subscription fee.
Plus, it probably needs to go out for RFPs and Qs and all those kinds of things, huh? It could. Wouldn't it? It could. Well, wouldn't it? Is it over the threshold? Well, for Public Works. Is it over the threshold for 192,000?
There's a different level for the services, but-
Just saying.
I mean, I'm all for getting different proposals in it. If you think that there's other vendors out there that might-
Well, I would have to go to Fort Wayne or up into-
Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Then they're probably gonna price themselves out, right?
Plus the fact that I don't have anybody that's gonna drive autopsies to Fort Wayne or to Kalamazoo, sit there and wait for them, and then bring them back. That's not gonna be cost-effective either.
But, you know, here's the thing. We shouldn't assume, we should check.
I agree.
But $192,000 contract per year, we should do that, just-
I do, I do agree with the desire to try and get it to be competitive, just because this is a very large amount. I mean, trying to find some sort of way to cut down that cost. But I also acknowledge there might not be a lot of people who do autopsies.
I absolutely agree with that.
It doesn't seem like a popular gig.
Right. And I'm just gonna go on the record that I learned of your $16,000 a month agreement at budget hearings was the first in my 11 years here that I ever knew that that existed.
Okay. Well, each, each year since I was elected, this is my four, I've been here four and a half years, the first time I've been asked to produce one.
That's fair.
And I know when Bob Cutler came up here, Bob would say, hey, you know, at the time they were 3,000, he goes, we need, you know, and there was a number on them, and it might have been a 10,000 or 9,000. I mean, it was in a three increment, but it wasn't a, hey, I got a $16,000 agreement that I gotta pay every month. It was, it was, hey, we anticipate X number more autopsies.
Well, I inherited whatever I have from Mr. Cutler, so.
Is this pathologist, the one in South Bend?
No, he's, he's originally from Valparaiso, but he does all the autopsies for Lepore, Porter, Lake County, Marshall County. I think there's one more. So he's doing all the autopsies for, because of the price and because nobody wants to come here.
Okay. I know previously, I think when Bob Cutler was coroner, it was his, or, yeah, the coroner, they used South Bend, I believe. I can't think of his name, so maybe he's retired, I don't know.
Dr. Pralo, maybe? He was-
Could be it.
He, he used to work for St. Anthony's, but now he doesn't work for them anymore. And he is a forensic pathologist, but he no longer works there, and I don't even know where he is now. He's gone. But that's the only two pathologists.
St. Anthony's doesn't have a pathologist.
No.
I will say-
Not a forensic pathologist.
I just pulled up your, the budget book from last year. I have a digital copy of it saved, and you had requested 150,000 for autopsy last year. So this isn't a new, a new thing.
I request, no, I always tell them how much it is, and they say, request 150 and come back for what you need. They've done this every year.
Yeah.
They, as in you, yes. They tell me to come back.
All right.
I questioned it this year as well, that if we know the amount, I mean, it's an expense that the county has to incur, so-
Not denying, not denying that.
You know, so I don't know why you give me one amount and then tell me to come back for the rest. I don't understand.
All right.
But it's okay, I don't have to understand.
But my impression was, and I'm not the one that told you to come back specifically, but we thought that that was a fluctuating number. That in other words, if you, if you had less next year, that number would come down. But obviously, that is a set number that's been set for some time.
Right. And the numbers-
As I stated, that's-
The numbers never go down. They're obviously constantly going up, and we're still saying this, paying the same amount.
They do change with the part for the autopsies that are on a county, because those are rate, we're paying the rate of whatever that county paid, right?
We're not paying that.
We don't pay that?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, for any accidents that occur in-
Lepore County.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And they're transferred.
Yes. If the accident occurs in Lepore County and they're transferred to South Bend to the trauma hospital there and pass away, yes, then we incur that cost, which I've been paying out of a toxicology lab account that I have that's already budgeted.
So that's probably where the confusion came from, because when you would come back and ask for, for extra money for autopsies-
No confusion.
No confusion. Okay.
All right. So I think more of this discussion is probably warranted when we get to revisiting the budgets at the next workshop. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the agenda item we have in front of us.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Motion to approve $58,000 out of Riverboat. Do I have a second?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, I see.
The other is for professional services. That's to pay my deputy coroners, obviously, since we are already 60 cases ahead of what we were at last year. My budget is just not going to-
What's the rate for them now?
They get 150 a call and $100 to transport. You also, last year, approved a stipend for them on a 12-hour shift. If they don't get a call, they receive $25. If they do a 24-hour shift and don't get a call, they get $50.
We had the request for autopsies at 42 and professional services at 16, and my motion was for 58,000.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Yeah, the way it's lumped in the agenda, we just had it, or the, yeah, as the item, it's all one item.
Okay.
So, motion for $58,000 covering autopsies and professional services out of Riverboat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval for $58,000 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Five two. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, Lepore County Prosecutor requesting transfer from user fees to a total of 25,803 to salary, OASD, OASDI, Medicare, health, and claims. Mr. Prosecutor?
First one is for APS. We do this every year. We would run a deficit for costs, so we would move funds from the unappropriated PTD fund, move it into the line items funds, all that for APS.
And you are, sir?
Sean Fagan.
The county-
Motion approved transfer. Motion approved transfer. Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion?
What's APS? Tell people what APS is.
Adult Protective Services, we were doing that. We had a two-year contract every year going back a long time, 40 years.
Close that out?
Yeah. This, state decided last year they wanted to do something else, went to private industries, so now a private contractor, private entity is doing APS services throughout the state. So this is to close it out for all remaining costs.
And how is that state running that, working? Are they, are they working with you? They got people in place?
As of January 30th, our role ended, July 1-
June 30th.
June, sorry. June 30th, our role ended, July 1, is when the new private contractor took over.
But are they in, I mean, have you had contact with them? I mean, are they picking up the slack for what Adult Protective Services is supposed to be doing? I'm just wondering, is there a gap here, it seems? You don't have to answer, never mind.
I would just say-
I just wanna make sure the people were taken care of out there. The people that need Adult Protective Services are getting services. That's all, that's all I'm asking.
You know, a lot of things in life can be done a whole lot differently and get better results.
I get it.
Just put it that way.
Never mind.
All right. He was giving you an open chance to attack.
I was, no, I was just, you know, like, wanted to make sure the people are-
Any, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, under the second one, requesting a transfer from 327 to 343, the amount of $10,000 for law enforcement equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Kessler. Question by Mr. Yagelski.
What was the law, what was the equipment? I'm sorry.
Well, we keep, we had been planning to do, originally, we had, we were doing funds for a project with state police and with Trail Creek. Those funds got used for our, we reused those funds for the ticket program we have, so